Let's go.
All right. I expect they heard that was authority.
We're behind, and so I want to see if we can catch up. Call and order, the regular meeting of the Waddick City Council is Monday, September 9, 2024, and 6:12 PM. Can we have a roll call, please, Shannon?
Council, Bert, Pollard, Nimi, Biondich, Morellicom.
Here. Welcome, everyone. I invite you, as you are able to, to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and once again, welcome. Council, you have in front of you the proposed agenda for this evening. One note, on the back, there's a 9H. That's a typo that's actually dealt with under 9K. I'm a little reluctant to try and reletter everything. We'll just go forward, knowing that we're not going to do that. Is there, are any changes being requested, or is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
No, it's the meeting agenda.
Yes.
Isn't that what you said?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You said meeting agenda, didn't you?
I did this time.
Okay.
Support.
I support.
Okay. Shannon got it.
Whoever.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, you have in front of you the materials for the consent agenda. Are there any things you would like polled for discussion later, or is there a motion to approve it as presented?
So moved.
Support. Been moved by Council Waller, supported by Council Biondich to approve the consent agenda as presented. Just wanted to note the seven new dwellings listed in the building inspection report. I think that's pretty exciting. A lot of towns would love to have that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. And with all that, then we're going to recess the regular meeting for a nuisance hearing at 6:14 PM. Jeff, you ready? Chief is ready. The first item I have is the property located at 215 Eighth Avenue North. And in a moment, I will give, if there's somebody here, the property owner or somebody representing the property owner, we will give them an opportunity to address the council. So, what's the status of this? I'm getting, it appears to be largely mowed.
And I did speak with, I think, the property owners here. I did speak with the property owner on the phone a few times, and they were making progress on it and continuing to, this one was primarily lawn grass. They've been out there cutting the grass. There's definitely things you could find, you know, that probably exceed, but I'm not sure if there's, if you necessarily call those weeds, or if they're just plants and brush, but there has been consistent work on this property.
I did walk by here today, and they have been chiseling away at it, but over here in the shadows where you can't see, that has not been mowed, over on the right-hand side. And in the back, yeah, if you go through the alley, that weeds are like knee-high in the back. So I don't know if the chief went by and took the pictures, or Jeff?
I did the initial ones, the initial ones, and the central part of these secondary ones. I did notice on the backside, there was some corrections, corrective actions. The individual that was there was kind of mental health emergency and had not been present for some time. However, I think he just came back. So, but in the back, I believe that it is not, the front and the north side and east side is, but not, first side, south side, but not east side.
So I guess I would make a motion to continue this, and Jeff, if you could give them another month? And if it's not done, then to go into debate?
I'll support.
We have a motion to hold this one over to continue it until the October meeting. Is there any further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, the next one is the property located at 205 Fourth Avenue North.
Do you have pictures of the backyard? Jeff?
No, no, this is the only version that I have here.
This is another one, that the backyard hasn't been touched. Weeds are knee-high. There's building materials back there.
And I don't believe the owner is present tonight. I haven't seen him.
Do we have the right owners?
Yeah, why was this addressed to Helen Shackleton? I think she would be greatly offended.
It automatically pulls it from the county land records, and that's what's under. It might be a contractor deed or something.
But does look like there was substantial progress in the front.
Yeah.
It seemed to be appropriate for another continuation. I can make that motion. I move that this one be continued to the October meeting. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Thank you.
I'd also like to see that we check our system, because according to the county tax records I'm looking at right now, it does not match with Helen Shackleton. It also says 215 on here, and it's 205 on the county. So I don't know if the county's wrong, or if...
It may be, so when you go in and you click on it, I work it automatically, it populates the property. That's what's coming out in the back.
Interesting. May want to look at this.
I can't remember if they have a different database other than St. Louis County, but maybe there is another. Do you have this?
I just found it interesting, because before, I've never seen her name up here on that property, so I'm not sure what's going on.
Well, you can, along with the contacting, once you can clarify who is the proper owner, you can let them know that we've, in theory, we're going to continue this. I guess we haven't voted yet, so...
I didn't. No, I'm just looking at the county.
So was there a motion to continue it?
And there was support. I made the motion in support by Council Biondich. I just want to make sure there weren't any questions before I call for a vote. Did you get your questions answered?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor of the continuance?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Got to wonder where they're pulling that from. The next property is located at 201 Main Street. Jeff, any updates before I ask if somebody's here representing the property owner? I'm guessing you are either the property owner or representing them, okay?
And I'm having a hell of a time hearing you guys, because it's kind of like, sorry about that, but...
Well, and we're having some sound system issues.
Right on.
We've been told, so...
Yeah. So, I guess I didn't even know about this. Somebody just called me and said, "Let her come up." So I really don't know anything about it. So can you guys fill me in a little bit on what this is?
There's been a...
Because, you know, we can just talk normal. That's easier.
Yeah, there's been a violation of the city's ordinances in terms of some of the, I think it's largely the growth of grasses on the property. There is a, was it a 12-inch limit in ordinance?
Do any of you members or anybody in here know the story of what happened? Couple of people? Can I take a minute?
Please do.
Okay, so what happened was when they had Main Street all tore up, then I had the state engineer come over and draw me the lines of where it, because I tore all that, all of the original stuff, because there was no sidewalk, so I could get right in there. So then I had a cement truck come, pour the footings, rented box yachts, built the whole wall, had it damn near done. Then the state surveyor came and said the one corner was six inches off. So after about a month of arguing with him, his name is Hayden, he's down in the cities, young kid, I go, "Would you at least come up and look at it, you know, and make double sure?" And the bottom line was, if I didn't remove it, they were going to remove it and charge me to remove it. And I kind of wish I would have came to you guys then. But, you know, I didn't know, because that state stuff, this is city things, I didn't know how to mix it up. So I guess the bottom line is, like, eight, nine thousand bucks I had into it, and I tore it up. And it sure looked nice. So, and then now, since Main Street's been so screwed up, I don't know when they're coming back. Are they done? Does anyone know? Like, I don't know if I should do this now.
We have a meeting tomorrow, our Wednesday.
Right.
The state hopefully will have more information.
You know, find out, like, if they're done.
And can we add to your punch list, this particular topic? I realize it's private property, but...
Well, the thing was, too, is this engineer guy is great, so I don't want to give him trouble. I'm not going to name his name. So he was just awesome. Got the plans out, showed me where everything was, and I put it where it was, you know, where the old stuff used to be. And when I was talking to this surveyor guy down in the cities, he was like, I go, "What would you have done with the old stuff that was there?" He goes, "Well, we would have tore it all and charged you for it." I'm like, well, you know, it was, so I've been working on the rest of the building, and I invite everybody to come and check it out, because I thought I was getting an award for bringing the Heritage Center back. So I have a lot of money wrapped up into it, and I don't want to do it again until either they're done and out of here, and I can just do it nice, the way it's supposed to be, or I don't know how to handle that. I'm ready to go, though. I mean, granted, I just lost my job, but other than that...
So you do plan to...
I have everything there. I want to do it. I just don't know, I don't know when to pull the trigger and do it again. And it sucks now, because they put the sidewalks in and everything. Like, there was nothing there. I backed the cement truck right up there, didn't have to worry about breaking up sidewalks or anything, you know? And it was done. I had it done, so...
So this complaint actually is like, the trees that are growing up along the front of the building and the long weeds. That's what this complaint is.
Yeah, because I, you know, and then when I do the, it, because I'm going to have, like, a locking ramp basically where that chair is at, you know, coming up that way, and then another locking ramp going out the side over by the pasty shop. But I don't, you know, I'm not going to do anything, so...
Okay, so right now, what we want you to do is just cut the weeds.
Yeah, I did that already. But I couldn't trim the tree, but you don't trim trees in any month that doesn't have an arm to kill the tree, so...
Yeah, it would be the ones growing up along the building.
Yeah. Yeah, I did that already, and so, and like, I got a joke about it, because I trimmed my rock garden, is what I call it over there, so, but, yeah, I don't know how to handle it, and I really want to do it. I'd like to do it again. And I have a lot of money wrapped up into it and had to move it, so I'm not sure how to proceed.
As you heard, we have a walkthrough of the Main Street project on Wednesday morning with MinDOT. Their crew is coming up, and I just asked our engineer to add your property to the list to find out where they're at and...
Yeah, because the thing was, too, like, right where the sidewalk is, that's where the footings were. They're still there for what used to be there. You guys remember the front of the building and all? There was like a little wall there with some plants, and then everything was falling in and blah, 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 you know? But I just put it right on top of that again, and it was right where that engineer guy drew the lines, so I didn't want to, you know? And it was bummer, so I just, after fighting and fighting with the guy, just ripped everything off. And I got all the blocks sitting there, you know? Everything's ready to go. It's just I don't know what to do.
I think the violation says the grass and weeds must be cut. I think Tom did a tremendous job picking that up, and I think we should end it there and let him continue on. He did a lot of work there and...
I would like to follow up, I would like to follow up with him, though, on his questions. I think we can ask, we can ask MinDOT.
Yes, yes, we want to work with him, because he, yes.
Yeah, like, that'd be great if you guys just give me the go-ahead, you know? I don't, you know, I don't...
We can let you know what we find out.
Yeah, right. Because I'm kind of...
We're wondering, too.
Yeah. Right.
MinDOT's not great, if you haven't noticed.
Oh, no.
Yes, I said that on camera.
I went through it, so, I don't know. Anything else, Grandma? My mom's here just chomping at the bed, ready to go.
I was here when we did this. We worked into the night to get it done.
They were coming to do the sidewalks.
And what it causes is horrible.
So we're trying to get it, because I wanted it done, so that they could pour the sidewalks right up to it. It would have been amazing. It would have been beautiful, you know?
Just this cement guy was almost $10,000.
No, $1,000.
How much was it, Tom? Okay, and how much was the bobcat guy, Tom? And how much was the Menard, Tom?
Were you making a motion?
I did make the motion, and he did what he was asked to do.
Yeah. Is that a motion, Dan?
Yes.
I'll support.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to dismiss the complaint, to consider the problem abated. Is there further discussion? Dare anyone? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
And then you guys are swinging on what? Yeah, I'm ready for my one, because it's right on Main Street, you know? It looks like, I mean, it does, but it's just not nice, so...
And I really appreciate it that you came. I really am. I just appreciate that you said what you did. My eyes are rolling when you started talking about what happened.
Yeah.
And I will make sure that they're done.
And we do all the stuff, do like, why not festival and all that? So you guys are swinging on, we've been steadily working on it. My money's running a little dry right now, but it'll come back.
I just have one question.
And I just want to finish it up, you know?
Well, it'll be Jeff that contacts him, or who's going to, so we follow through?
I'll try to get contact, because I've got the field box number in town.
Yeah. Yeah, I check that out once a month, you know, because I don't get your addresses.
And I had a number that I think I like, a number.
Ready? 612? 702? 1307?
So when you produce the tape of the meeting, can you scramble that number? So he doesn't get a lot of calls?
Yep, yep. All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a comment.
Grandma?
My old darn it!
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll shut up. But it's not right. He spent all that money, and it's done a drain.
The place is beautiful, Tom.
Stop in and visit the place and see all the work he's done in there.
I've been in it.
It's awesome.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome to stay.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I haven't been in there now.
Okay, the next one I have is 111 Main Street.
Because I'm not going to talk anymore.
I must have just did it today, because I walked by earlier. Yesterday it wasn't.
Is anybody here, is the property owner here, or anybody representing him? Okay?
I look at that picture, he did exactly what was asked.
Did he cut it?
Yep.
Yeah. I couldn't tell, because of shadows.
I'll make a motion to dismiss.
You did.
Oh, sorry. Didn't hear you. I'll support.
You made the second. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to declare the problem abated and to dismiss the complaint. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. The next one I have is 209 First Avenue North. And once again, in a minute, I'll see if there's anybody here, if the property owner's here, or anybody representing him.
And there was at the last meeting, there's been some progress on this, but there was a vehicle that remained. That's continued.
So you said that there's been some progress in terms of the brush and things like that, Jeff?
Yeah, they cleaned up the brush and some of the stuff out of the yard, like the last. And I had contacted the property owner, but they just need to get that vehicle up there. We're all prepared to do that, but this photo looks from today, but it's not been moved yet.
So the grass is long, too, isn't it? In this yard where this car is parked? That the grass hasn't been mowed either?
Well, they had mowed the grass, and it was still long around there, but I've just got the one picture of the vehicle, so I'm not sure.
I walked, I drove by last night, and it looked like the grass had been mowed, so...
I think it's just in that picture, it's not mowed underneath the vehicle.
Council, your wishes?
Are we, are we able to give, like, a two-week continuance? And then if that vehicle's not out of there, then move to abate? Are we allowed to do that?
You're continuing the hearing, so you just have another hearing in the next five minutes. End of the two weeks.
Oh, okay.
You could have baited, you know, two weeks, baited, and it leads us to it, leads us to it.
Does that work?
Never heard of it before.
We've done that before, where we've declared a nuisance and directed staff to abate and take their time, and allow the person to resolve the issue before we can get to it. So it's six of one half dozen of another, whether continuation or...
Because if you both abate, it hasn't, the vehicle lost its 10/23...
Have you, you have spoken to this individual?
Yes.
Is there anybody here? The property owner's not here, or, okay. What would you like to do, council?
Did Steve make a motion?
I did not. I was just asking the question if we could...
So we've got a couple of options.
I mean, they are trying to get it out of there? Is that what you said, Jeff?
Yeah, they've, well, they've traded them a couple of few times. They're not being located.
I mean, I guess I would, you know, give them, I don't know how to word it, but give them two weeks, and if it's not, then to move ahead with the abatement?
Oh, we're making a motion to abate right now and direct staff to do the abatement within two weeks.
There you go.
Not do it within two weeks.
No, do it within two weeks, but then wait till the end. Yeah.
Right.
That is, that is verbiage.
That's the motion.
Okay.
I'll support.
Moved by Council Waller, supported by Council Biondich to declare a nuisance and have staff receive the abatement, allowing the property owner two weeks to correct the remaining issue. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, the last two, I believe, were continued from last month. The first is 113 Fourth Avenue North. Is the property owner here, or anybody representing him? Okay.
Isn't everything looking right over there now?
Yeah, I mean, that's your other request.
Council, any questions, or...
I do. So Jeff, is that motorcycle, that non-running motorcycle still there in front of the garage? That's not in the picture? I'm sorry, Patty, I, would you repeat that? I said there was a non-running motorcycle in front of the garage, but it's not in the picture. The picture is cut off. Was that still there?
I'm not sure. It was long before, I'm going to flip the pictures. So I don't know if that motorcycle is still there.
Council?
I would say the majority is cleaned up, and I, I don't have any issue with the motorcycle parked in the driveway, to be honest with you, so...
So is that a motion?
I'll make a motion, we dismiss.
I'll support.
Been moved by Council Biondich, supported by Council Nimi, to declare the issue abated and to dismiss the nuisance charge. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. And the last one that I have is also continued from last month, the 312 Fourth Avenue North. I believe the property owner is present tonight.
It's just, this one?
You got any you want to share with us, Jonathan?
I got license and tabs on all the trucks in the backyard now. They're all moved. One doesn't have tail lights, and right now it should in the next week or so. Got everything out of the front car inside the society, and hopefully get that into the backyard on one of my trailers here.
It's, this picture on the back is an old picture, right?
That's the old picture.
Yeah. Because that's with our, that's with our...
You just walked by the day of the day.
I know, because that's why I asked, because I, because I know that wasn't there yesterday or the day before.
Right.
I drove by last night, and everything looks fine.
Yeah, so disregard that last picture.
In my opinion, I should state.
You were wonderful, Jonathan, thank you. I'm going to dismiss this.
I'll support.
Moved by Council Berg, supported by Council Biondich to declare the problem abated and dismiss the nuisance charge. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan, for coming tonight. Okay, I'm, as far as I know, we've completed the items that were listed, so the nuisance hearing is closed at 6:40 PM, and we will resume the regular agenda of the council meeting. The first item was, we have a presentation from Amanda Cook. Steve, did I say that correct?
Yes.
Okay. You're up.
So last month, I had the luxury of having Kathy and Jeff come to my property look at the back drainage issue. I was wondering if there was any resolution in regards to the flooding of the backyard, if you're still working on it, and who you're working on it with.
Well, we've got to just cut some underlining along the side where the paved surface meets the aggregate surface, so we'll have to work on getting some stuff packed in there, sort of happy material in there. I don't know that there is a long-term fix on that, other than just making things like that.
So will we put on the agenda for continuing maintenance throughout the spring and the fall, so this doesn't keep happening? Or do I still need to come in here and take video of me having a river running through my backyard?
No, we'll, we'll stay in touch, Josh.
And then, in relations to my trailers, we are coming up on winter time. I still haven't had a certified yes or no, if I can move my trailers to my side alley area. Side yard, yeah, because I don't have an alley. So it'd be the seventh... So it'd be the 7th Street and, or 7th Avenue and 3rd Street.
Where the trailers were, as you guys said, that they can't be there because they were in our front yard, which was actually our side yard. We've gotten rid of trailers.
Yep.
Cleaned up.
We're gonna get two in storage here shortly, or Steve can have a few.
If I leave my trailers where they are, are you guys gonna guarantee your plow truck when it comes by in the alley or is it gonna mess up my trailers?
Or my snowmobiles?
Which, I mean, we're close. We're still in our yard, but we know, Benji knows, everybody knows. Things happen. Ice chunks come up. It's gonna blow into the trailer. You know, it'd be a lot nicer if we could just put them back where they were. You know, they weren't in anyone's way. None of our neighbors complained. We don't know who complained. You know, and the, the whole tattling thing is just ridiculous.
And I have a question. Who authorized, was this another anonymous or was this a citywide effort for like cleanup now?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. What'd you say?
So today we have Tom and his mother individuals in here for light. Was that another anonymous complaint in relations to those individuals or was this a citywide kind of cleanup?
I would say it's an ongoing, yours was an anonymous.
Yes.
Yeah, yours was. That I know.
But it's an, it's an ongoing effort. I don't, I wouldn't say, I, I, I'll be the first to tell you, we don't have a good system for this.
Clearly.
Are they asking if there was an organized go out and check every property for light?
Yes, after the first.
No.
But they do, the, we do have people checking as, as they encounter things.
Right.
But they're not going out just looking for that.
Like since, just so you know, I've only been there once, okay? And then the rest of the time I talk to Jeff. That's all I, I've done. I've never gone back to your place again, okay? Just that one time where I got permission from you guys. And so I also know, I looked, I was just curious. I usually don't look to see who made the complaint. Have no clue. But I know he and I aren't going back over there. I know that, so I don't know who's showing up. I have no idea. I can't answer.
I was just making sure, because with the maintenance shortfalls that you're having, to have somebody out there specifically checking on this. It could have been done at the same time as the anonymous complaints. It looked like everybody's a citywide effort versus pinpointing individuals. It would have probably saved up the budget aspect as well if you would have done it all at once versus doing two separate things, I guess you could say.
It's a, it's a, like a rotating all year long. There's no, there's no like set time or end date or start date. So.
I was also looking from the budgetary aspect of having individuals going out and doing this when it could have been done by someone else.
And someone else could come out and, and complain again. I mean, it's, you know, we don't have control over that. They have, you know, citizens have that right. Jeff, what happens is, just so you understand, if, if we get a complaint and we look at it and there's a question about it, then we go out and we look. You know, but we, we stand in the alley, we stand up, we don't walk people's property like we got permission from you guys. So we're very careful, but we go look and we decide, is this a blight or isn't a blight? And sometimes it's very diff, I'll be honest, it's very difficult because there's a fine line there. So we, when we went out, and I've said this before multiple times, we went out, I think we looked at thirty, we had thirty-some properties that are on the line. And we said no. You know, that they haven't crossed the line. Now, somebody else could come along and say, totally different. And then, and then, then it comes before the council and, and the council makes a decision. Okay, but just so you know, that Jeff and I aren't, aren't aiming at somebody. We're, that's not what we do. I've been doing this for a while. And we're very respectful. I personally, with your property, I don't know where your, I don't quite understand where your, your stuff was before. But you got, in my eyes, you got a problem because you're on a corner lot. You got the big part of the, the land facing the avenue. So you got all those homes with quote-unquote technically nothing there. Then you're on the street side and your alley's side is so small. I mean, I, I sympathize with you there. And that's why I was glad I walked it. Now, I, I was very careful. I stayed in the back where I said I was going to. I didn't go in the front. Didn't go on the side of your house, stayed right where the vehicles were. And I mean, you got it, you got a problem. And I, I sympathize with you, but the, the butt is, is that you're gonna have to come up with a decision. I can't do that for you, nor Jeff.
Well, we've asked for our easement back from the curb. So he said we had to put in a self, or what was it?
Indoor storage.
Indoor storage. Jeff said this.
Okay.
And we've asked, as soon as we found out about it, we came here, we tried to get it. We still haven't gotten a call back. We don't even know how far we have to put a shed back or anything. We're trying, we're trying to rectify the problem and we're not getting any support on this end. So that's why we're here.
I'm sorry.
That's why we're here again, because our trailers are fine there before. Again, it's not in our front yard. So why can't they be parked there? There's plenty of people with trailers parked on the side of their house. You know, so that's why we're trying to figure this out now.
Even for winter and then we'll go back in the spring with the frost, so we can move them back. But we don't want our stuff damaged. We don't want coming after you because our stuff is damaged.
We're just trying to rectify the problem.
Okay, and as we talked, the, the carport, the hoop rug, whatever term of playing on, twenty-five feet back to South 200, which is fine. The other stuff on the amount of trailers and is a trailer or vehicle that, that really contributed, I'm not sure if there is a clear.
Definition of that.
On that, that's.
Yeah, thank you. To the town hall here and ask for our slop map of our land, what we can do. And we still haven't gotten a call back. You know, everyone said you could get us, get hold of us, we did nothing. Obviously, if you want us to build it for those.
Yep.
Because it, you said twenty-five feet, before it was thirty feet. She said twenty-five feet from the curb. Sorry, Patty, I have one point, so.
From, from the front of your house?
Yes. So everything is, one person says from the middle of the street, one person says from the curb. I need to know what this is so that way I can rectify everything. And you know, again, back to the same thing. I wouldn't have to put up a whole barn or shed or anything. If they'd just let me put the trailers right back where they were for the winter, move them back in the summer, and then we're all good.
Jeff, I'd rather spend my money on replacing my front porch versus putting up something that's gonna cover something that's not for you.
Temporarily. It's only gonna last a couple of years. And how godly does that look? Everyone knows what the carports look like. They're just terrible. But if you want my stuff covered up, again, you.
I don't see why there'd be a problem with parking where you had them before, honestly. I'm just looking at the ordinance and looking at your yard faces the street, not the avenue.
Correct.
I mean, I'd have.
Of course, there's a bridge next to it. You could get another ticket.
And then you're, and then you're gonna move them back, so I, I don't.
I can tell you what Public Works will.
I just know you got, I know, I just know you have an issue with, and you, it's not your fault. You didn't build the house, you know? We didn't have all these vehicles, recreational vehicles, I'll go thirty years ago. And so it's a problem for people because they have nowhere to store them. So personally, okay, when you say you're taking it back, are you taking it around to the front between your? If I remember when I, when I had driven by, and that's been a while, your house is first end, okay. Thank you. So you're talking about bringing the vehicles around to where your patio was? There's a piece in there, there's a.
Chain link fence.
They were right along the fence before, right?
Yeah, they were right along the fence. And then in the spring, you're gonna move them back?
Back to.
Well, personally, I have.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there's nothing in the ordinance that says you can't do that either, so.
Okay, well.
It says front yard specifically in the ordinance, so.
Yeah, we got trouble moving them being in the side yard, so.
I'm a little confused and we just wanna make sure. If I made an amends or easements or something that you guys granted me, so I made sure that all of my weeds were taken care of around my trailers. I'd be willing to do that.
Yeah, you know, they get to twelve inches, then you gotta take care of it, okay? But I, the, the butt is when I, I'm looking at your property and, you know, everybody has different, different definitions about front and side and all that. Especially when you're on a corner lot. I'm fortunate because our house faces the avenue. I don't have that problem facing the street. Okay, so I'm not making excuses for anybody. I'm just saying be prepared that if, if somebody complains, that could be it. Okay, just heads up.
Okay, sounds good.
Does that sound fair?
Yeah.
We all are under, all agree that I can move.
Well, we'll find out. We haven't talked to the north end yet. This is the south.
Yeah, we're the south sider, so.
I really regret using that.
We, we all know the south side. Take Martin.
Well, we gotta add some here, okay?
I, I guess my only question is how many trailers?
It's just the two, well, three total. The black trailer, the one with the snowmobiles on it, and then the one that's sitting in the front yard.
Oh, so you won't have them by the alley anymore?
No, then we'll move them. Yeah, and then of course we'll be hooking up to the plows soon, so the plows will be in the way.
Let's hope so. It's eighty degrees, though.
It's coming.
Yeah, that, that was my only question.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought you had other trailers that had to be.
Oh, no.
No.
We already have a case that worked with the boat, so.
Yeah, you took care of that. That's what you said, so.
Yeah.
Because technically it was too many, but you take care of it. So I personally don't have an issue, okay?
Okay.
And I do thank you for letting, I'm very careful. I don't walk on people's property unless I'm invited. I know you put my big toe on their property. I stand in the middle of the alley, so I appreciate you inviting us. And I appreciate you coming and being respectful. I really appreciate that.
We appreciate you. We don't, we don't wanna cause any trouble.
No, and we don't either, okay?
Yes.
Just follow the ordinance. Thank you.
So, you all good?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only presentation I have listed. The move is on the agenda. Mayor and council member reports. I'll switch it up and start with Counselor Biondich.
Okay, Tracy, in your amenities coordinator report, there was a note about the shouldering material? So this is more of a Matt Reed question, possibly. When are we looking at doing that? When is that gonna occur?
What was the comment?
Shouldering, just for the road at the campground.
For the rest of the whole project? That shouldn't be done anytime.
Okay.
Been in contact. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with them and they were gonna get on that, so. It's on my list to call them tomorrow before I even heard this, so we'll check in on that, so.
Gotcha.
Yep.
The street on First Avenue that's full of apparently sand. There's a big empty place where we're missing pavement.
No, that's, that's, in the search hole, they're.
Right.
Not so bad on the spot, but that's another bad question.
Yeah. When are we looking at paving that? Or what's the plan? Is that?
I just got an email today from the paving contractor, very, by the end of October at the latest, but they're talking about very soon.
Okay.
They didn't give me a firm date, but it's coming. But there's that one and the one up on Loos Road too. They're both gonna get done.
Oh, okay. So have you heard about the MinDOT, is there gonna be anything at the bridge? Because I keep getting asked about that. And I said, like Main Street, I have no idea.
The one that's coming down.
Yeah, yeah.
West End, but I can ask him if he'd like me to find out, get you some information.
Just, you know, something. A little bit of communication from MinDOT would be super.
I think the chief has tried to investigate that and it's a tough nut to get information out of them, isn't it?
In regards to which?
The bridge.
Yeah, but. It was supposed to be done this, well, the spring was hot and warm, but it was.
MinDOT strikes again. So I've had some people bring up the burn pile. Not only is the, it's, it's, it's kind of a mess down there, but it, it, it's full of garbage. People are throwing garbage in there. And that's a huge problem. So I don't know how to, I don't know how we handle that. I don't know. But I'm assuming that the DNR is gonna come and tell us, you gotta shut that down here eventually, so. But there's, it's a problem and it needs to be dealt with, and I don't have a solution for that. I usually don't like to bring things up unless I have a solution, but. There's plenty of trash back there and it should be something we deal with. Maybe at least something to keep an eye on by law enforcement?
I mean, keep an eye, you know, what I'm gonna be after I sell it, I can't, it just depends on where the county city wants to spend the money to.
Right.
Probably take care of the problem with the camera. But that would be up to where the county city wants to spend the money on.
Right.
Steve, the township has a similar problem.
Mm-hmm.
And what they did is they gated it and they have hours posted. And they have a person down there checking at that particular time.
Right. White Lakes does the same thing with the recycle center. I know Aurora's got theirs gated, or they used to, I guess. I don't know if they do anymore, but. So just something to think about because it's, it's, it's a problem down there. I noticed there's a lot of damage in the alley by the apartments from the construction work there. Even pretty decently new pavement that's gotten pretty dinged up by an excavator that wasn't ours. And I don't believe it should be our responsibility to fix. So can we look, is there, can we look into that? Talk to, I don't know who owns that property over there, Zenith Property or something like that? And I know we just talked about snow plowing that's coming up. And I know we talked, Patty and I met with city administrator and public works foreman about our snow plow, or our snow removal policy. I do think we should look a little closer at snow plowing as a whole, like when the guys get called out. What that, what that looks like, what time. Because I know talking to some of the Public Works employees, not just from our town, but from other towns, the earlier the better when you're not dealing with traffic. You know, granted, we end up paying a little bit more in overtime, but it also gets our streets cleaned earlier and creates a much safer environment. And of course, the last thing that's, everybody's asking is the fall citywide cleanup. It's, it's, it's been asked multiple, multiple times on social media. I've gotten phone calls, emails. Do we have a plan to do a fall cleanup?
Not set yet.
This month?
October.
I presume you want to wait until after the rummage sale?
Yeah.
Yes.
I think as a citywide clean, as a whole, we need to look at maybe, I mean, if we're gonna talk about budgetary and man-hours and. I, you know, I think once a year should be more than sufficient for a long-term and, you know, brush appliances, things like that. But household bags of garbage, I mean, we're tying up our Public Works screw at quite a, you know, and that might be the unpopular opinion with the public, but that's. You know, the cost and the amount of work that goes into that is, is, I think, more than the value. And so.
You go to Boxbury and the mattress across from the old city hall waiting for it.
Yeah. See, we haven't even.
They don't take that.
And that's, I mean, that's kind of example stuff we gotta fix because we're not taking that. It's early and we're not, so.
No.
Are we the only city that actually does this cleanup?
No, there's plenty of other cities do.
No, they, they, they have some format.
Yeah. But just taking bags of random household trash is not the responsibility of the city and Public Works. I mean, we all pay our gar, we are pay our garbage bill. We pay, we buy our bags and. You know, we've got pickup at the house already for it, so. You know, I can see helping people with appliances. I can see helping people out with, you know, some maybe scrap metal. Some different brush that maybe you don't have a way to haul it down to the brush pile, but.
And we can flesh out some, some tighter rules on it. When we first brought back the, the citywide cleanup ten or twelve years ago, it was in part of the discussion we were having on blight and nuisance cleanup. And it was intended, so we weren't, we didn't wanna psych people for an unwashing machine, that they didn't have the ability or the means or whatever to, to get out of there. So it was paired with that, that turning into saving a dollar on the garbage bag that, that week because of citywide cleanup. That was never, never the intended use of the citywide cleanup.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Nimi.
No, I, well, I had five questions, but I got them answered before the meeting. But I do, I do have one. Amanda mentioned it and I saw it, and then I, I haven't written them down, but when I, because I do the alleys. That's where I look, okay? And like John mentioned, if I'm, and if I miss, uh, speak, John, just so, but these washouts that they're getting in the alley where the driveway and they get the washouts, like we saw at Amanda's place. Aren't we spo, uh, who's to take care of that? I mean, that's the city, right? Or is it their driveway and part of their driveway? I mean, I'm asking because when we like, we looked at Amanda's, you had the alley. You had her driveway that goes into the garage right there, and then you had this small washout. And then John said that he has, you have a washout, right?
I told you I'm voting for it.
Yeah, so, hold on, hold on, let me. I'm not running next year, so you don't have to worry about not voting for it.
I'm voting.
He told me that, so. So, so what I'm asking is, is that? What I'm asking is, is that the city's responsibility to take care of it? Or do we have to hire somebody to take care of it? Or is it the homeowner's responsibility? I mean, what is it? Because it sits right there by the driveway in the alley, and a lot of them do. Because I, like I said, I go down the alleys and I look. So, who's supposed to take care of it?
The one that went, like, we had looked at Cooksey's. You could probably debate on either side whether or not the city has to go back and do that or whether or not that's the property owner's approach to the alley. I think it's appropriate for us to maintain that as we can, but I don't think there is a firm answer on who has to do that. I think the city could definitely say that we take care of the driving surface and not that. That would be out of the property order. There's no ordinance or statute that says that we have to do that. It's more a service thing. The stuff in the alleys, that's ours to take care of. It's in the actual alley surface. But that the intersection of where the garage approach and the alley paving leave, if that washes out, if that wears away, you can kind of say it's either.
Okay, so there's no firm answer.
Other than we'll continue to do what we can where we can.
So, like with them and with John, you could fill it... We could fill it in, right? With gravel or whatever they use classified. So, it could be filled in. So, we could do that, right?
If we had some.
With the council's approval and...
Well, and that's... So, the one at Cooksey's is just kind of a little mean. Instead of the one in John's alley, we've gotta get in there and get some more material in there. That's just us taking care of the city alley. That's all.
That's all. I just wanted to ask that question because it comes up, and there doesn't seem to be a clear answer, so...
Thank you. Counselor Waller?
All right. So, Jeff, for months now, we've been asking you to get some bids on cameras. Where are we at with that?
Still working on that.
And your meeting schedule? I... We haven't been receiving that either. So, at the last meeting, I think it was, you said you would send something out on Fridays to let us know, like what's up ahead and what has happened previously.
Did you give them last meeting?
I did.
You did?
Okay. And I apologize. Part of that, I've been working on the email issue also, so that's made it complicated things. But I'll get both of those taken care of.
Okay. And then, I think Steve has brought this up numerous times also. The non-working fire hydrants in the city. Like, can somebody do an inventory of that? Because I think the fire chief would probably like to know which hydrants are working and which ones aren't if they have to go out for a fire. Because I know there's three for sure, and there may be even more. And where are we on that? Like, who's supposed to fix those?
So, that's through our... It's a PUC responsibility. We go through our contract with People Service to do that. They're on it. We've got a PUC meeting on Thursday we'll be discussing again. But we do have the inventory, the list of the ones that are out there, and there's three.
We had a meeting on Friday, and I did ask Matt to convey to the People Service staff that this is a real priority, that we want this addressed. I don't know what kind of response you got, Matt.
Six hours by the school or by the garage owner. The bag is gone, and the comb is gone, so we must work on that one.
And while we're on People Service, we haven't gotten report from them since April.
And we've been meeting with People Service. They're going through a lot of turnover and shortages there. So, that's something that we, I, the PUC, have been asking for from People Service as well. The People Service report that everybody liked so much, that was actually the creation of a former employee who's not there. And there's... And they have an employee, but there's a reason why everybody liked that particular employee so much, and those reports are a big part of it. So, we're requesting those from People Service as well.
Okay. And then on the Callahan land, where are we with that?
Hold on. I think I can speak up there. I said I helped you up off of that. It's a very difficult legal description, and I sent it down for review by an attorney, and his paralegal walked it through because that's gonna have to be done by the register of deeds. It's gonna be accepted by the register of deeds. We're trying to get that description now, and hope to have it very soon.
Okay. And it is going to be, what, an acre? How much? I mean, it's not the whole strip of land. It's only that little parcel.
I don't know if it was an acre or not. I don't remember that. But it was like the west 300 feet of this, oh, yeah.
Okay.
Acre acre. I can't tell you right now.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure the whole strip didn't get transferred.
No, no, no.
That last time.
That was a problem separating on attack parcel, dividing one. That was, in fact, a difficult thing.
Okay. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up is NPL, that's doing the utility work, they're rerouting the natural gas pipeline, correct?
Correct.
So, I see they're taking water from the hydrant on Eighth. Are they paying us for that water?
Yeah, we invoice for that.
Okay. All right. That was a concern because I thought this is a company that's using a lot of water, and I was hoping we were getting reimbursed for it.
Yeah, there's quite a few companies, the Angabore and the directional drilling crews, and then the railroad, both have agreements where we invoice them for the water they flow.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Counselor Burke?
Any update? Are we doing any storms where work? I know that one alley, if it starts snowing in my place, we'll be buying new equipment for the...
I will get updates on there's that one, and then there's one not too far up from you. I'm not sure if those deficiencies are related, but I'll get updates on, and I'll get them over placed.
I mean, bringing it up every month, and I still have nothing. Like, these next couple of items, this council room, we've been on it for a year, still doesn't work. And I saw Steve Rock leave while I was coming in tonight, but I don't think it's finalized. I don't think... And every month, we hear a different excuse.
We're still waiting on Internet.
That excuse I've never heard before.
That's been the problem since February.
I don't know. And the last thing, and I know the budget committee's gonna be working pretty hard, and I'm gonna be one pushing I works the heck out of this place. I'm tired of it. But that's just one person, and that's it.
Thank you. The only thing I wanted to bring up, other than Oktoberfest is coming up really soon before the next meeting. Anything you want to announce about Oktoberfest, Karen?
Not directly, but if you're doing open forum at the end of the agenda.
Okay. All right. And I believe that the staff from FEMA are going door-to-door in some... I'm not sure what their systemic fashion is. It seemed kind of random, but they are leaving these disaster assistance flyers. I just wanted people to know that this is for real. This is legit. It's not a scam. And if you had issues from the June floods, this is probably the best opportunity... If there is a best opportunity, to see if there's any kind of assistance available. And Steve tells me it's on the Facebook page as well.
It was, yeah. Brian, did they go to your house?
Yep.
Okay. I directed him your way, so...
Yeah, we just got one the other day, and I've seen him around, but...
Well, I've had three different inspectors come to our house, so they're making the most.
Good, good. With that, I'm going to...
Mayor?
Yeah.
Railroad or the bridge west of town, their MinDOT is in the process of trying to come up with an agreement with the railroad. That's what's taking so long. It's...
So...
I don't know what the agreement is or any of that, but that's what I was just told, that it's coming to some sort of an agreement with the state and the railroad. That's why it's taking so long.
So, we should not hold our breath at all.
It's hard to detour trains. I know that.
When are they gonna finish Masabi Trail? I looked at the highway, see where it stops. When are they gonna finish coming into Boavick?
That's not really a Matt question.
No, it wasn't a Matt, but he brought up the...
My understanding was they were going to terminate at the little gazebo down there by the warming shack. And that's it for the current plan. And there's, I think, a pond yet to... A floating bridge yet to be done as well.
Okay. I know it wasn't a Matt question, so I apologize.
So, it's gonna be a race between Masabi Trail and the railroad to see who gets things done. Okay. Back... We'll keep the agenda moving here. I didn't see any old business listed yet. New business, warm up your motions. Item 9A, resolution 2024-13, accepting the transfer of the Lakeside Cemetery Association's assets to the city of Boavick. Do you have anything to add to what's in our packets? Or I guess I should ask Kathy if there's anything to add to what's in our packets.
Just so you know, the cemetery association, they have done a really good job. This has nothing to do with their work at all. I commend them for all the years that they spent. It's just, the reason it was brought up is because I brought it up because I've heard over the years, who owns the land? Or they make a statement with a question mark at the end. The city owns it, but there's always a question mark. So, the council wants to hear the history. Larry spent a lot of time reading this little book and the history of this cemetery and who actually owned it. And so, we did very... Especially Larry did due diligence in finding the information on this. So, I just want to commend this cemetery association. But this will be turned... It is city property, and it needs to be taken care of as city property. And like Larry mentioned, this has been ninety years. I'm sorry, but every time I say ninety years, I start smiling, you know? But it's been ninety years, and it should have been taken care of a long time ago. And I know in previous councils, it's been brought up, but then it's always set aside. And so, I decided this year, no, it cannot be set aside. We need to take care of it, make it legal, and make sure everything's done appropriately so we have a good cemetery. And Larry can answer.
I don't mean to belabor this, but I drafted both of these resolutions, one for the cemetery association and then one for our city. Kathy keeps talking about ninety years. Cemetery Association was actually put together and qualified in 1896. And then it ran great. It was separate and distinct, and it was supposed to be separate and distinct. And in 1935, they transferred it to the city, the land, because of the WPA or depression area era situation. And then it was transferred back. No wonder the cemetery association couldn't make ends meet. They were selling land for the city they were supposed to have. That was their budgetary item, so they, like Kathy said, they were doing a good job. They just were selling city land. So, when we found this out, we corrected it, but the committee suggested we correct it by transferring all my assets, and there is a statute that follows that. I think that's referenced in the resolution, so I think this is hard work by the committee also.
So, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Support.
Moved by Counselor Neame, supported by Counselor Beyondich to adopt resolution 2024-13.
The only thing, it says the 12th day of September instead of the ninth.
Correct date.
Oh.
That makes sure that whatever one I sign...
Says the ninth.
I missed that.
Or I could wait until the 12th to sign it.
We go through so much paper around here, Jim. I don't think it'd make a difference. Print another. I would like to say, I would like to see that $77,000 that we are accepting stay in a line item for cemetery. Because we're gonna need mowers. We're gonna need, you know, maintenance for that, so...
Can I make one more comment?
Sure.
It addresses Patty's earlier. This is the first step. Because I've taken and interested in the cemetery and as a council member with Jeff and Shannon and Chipper wanted to come as a citizen, then we would give a proposal... They would give a proposal of what's next to be presented to the council as work out that it needs to be done. And it'd be done in steps. I... You can't... Some of the stuff that people want, we just can't do. It's gonna be down the road. But there are preliminary things that we can do that will cost, but not at great expense, I'm hoping. But just so you know, there'll be plans, and you'll get... The council will get them each time, steps.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Shannon, when you're ready, roll call, please.
Counselor Burke?
Aye.
Waller? Aye. Kathy? Beyondich?
Aye. Hi.
The motion is carried, and the resolution is adopted. Item 9B, resolution 2024-14, in support of CASA. Is that how everybody says it?
Yeah, CASA. Commerce Day, I would...
C-S-A-H. CASA is a made-up word. Main Street Railroad Crossing Grade Separation Project.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Counselor Waller, supported by Counselor Beyondich. And not to belabor it, nothing about, roundabouts anywhere in our resolution if that does come up.
If you would like to discuss that portion, you can call Vic, and he will talk to you at length.
Just not at the council in Boavick. Oh, when you're ready, Shannon, roll call, please.
Counselor Burke? Waller? Aye. Kathy? Beyondich? Mayor Wyeth?
Aye. Motion is carried, resolution has been adopted. Resolution 2024-15, authorizing the city of Boavick to make application to and accept the grant funds from Iron Range Resources Revenue Bonds issued per Minnesota laws 2024, Chapter 127, Article 69, Sections 15 through 16.
Support.
Moved by Counselor Burke, supported by a couple of counselors. Did you grab somebody?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just have a question. Does all of this money have to be used for this sewer extension?
No. So, the wording in the bill was pretty vague about the utility for housing infrastructure. With where the bids came in, there's some money left over that the PUC is looking at for some other needed repairs on the sanitary sewage water system as well, so...
And then I wasn't sure. I didn't really understand what they were talking about in the PUC minutes about hooking up the water. Was... Were they going to be using this grant money for the water? I don't know if you'd call it extension or connection or what.
They did a change order in the contract to also add water stubs. The original proj... The reason this project came out is there's water in our sewer lines that run right through those lots, water rings and sewer rings. There's some details on the pressure of those lines, why you can't just hook into them like you could in the rest of the development right there. For some reason, this was not part of voyageable retreats. Don't know why. So, because that was the focus, was the sanitary sewer system, the project was all designed to add another low-pressure line and then add services for those people to hook onto. But there was also no water services for them to hook onto like there was in the rest of the development either, for some unknown reason. So, since they had the trench dug, since they had a contractor under contract that had them on site, then they actually added those water hookups as well like they did for the rest of the development.
And is this grant being used for that?
Yes. Yeah, it's a change order on that project.
Sounds like we're gonna get a... There's already a home under construction out there, and my understanding is we're going to get another building permit very shortly and possibly another one before the end of the year.
Yeah, the lack of... And they were under the impression that they had the ability to have done, and they bought the lots, and they had plans to begin building immediately. This was kind of a holdup in their...
So, the project is going to pay dividend. So, the project is going to pay dividends. The intent was for housing and that's what we're getting, so that's, that's great. Okay, we had the motion in support, uh, everybody ready to vote? Shannon, when you're ready?
Councilor Burke? Aye.
Waller?
Aye.
Kenee?
Aye.
Candice?
Aye.
Marleyton?
Aye. Motion is carried, resolution is adopted. Uh, Matt, you might be up. Approval to pay application number two, City Park Walking Path. We discussed this a little bit in the agenda meeting, a lot of it in the agenda meeting.
I can, this would be the final pay after the pavilion project, the work's all done, so I didn't, I can answer any questions you have, but otherwise it's just-
Is there a retainage, Matt?
Pardon me?
Is there a retainage?
That's, that's already taken all.
Okay.
Yeah, this would be final payment. So move.
Support.
Moved by Councilor Burke, supported by Councilor Waller. Uh, I came up with $9,867, does that sound right?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. 9F, Larry, this is the last time you and I get to debate this.
There's no debate. There's just no pattern.
I make a motion that we do not waive the limits.
Support.
We have a motion and it's support, the, the debate is the logic of voting to not do something.
I know.
Somebody else can argue about this next year.
It's those darn lawyers everywhere.
Is there a motion on the floor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Yeah, maybe that's the last thing that won't make sense to me.
You win the debate.
Yeah. Uh, item 9G, approval of public works equipment purchase to mower, I think we had quite a discussion about this and I have a feeling that, uh-
Make a motion.
We're gonna table this or-
Make a motion to table.
It's been moved to, by Councilor Beyondich to table this, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. I apologize, I should've explained that tabling motions are not subject to debate. Uh, 9H, approval of charitable gam, oh, that's the one that's not real, that's going to be 9K. Got my list mixed up. 9I, scheduled special meeting for preliminary levy approval, Jeff has suggested Monday, September 23rd. I only ask that we do this bef, no later than the 25th because I'll be out of commission for a few days, uh, starting the 26th, so. If the 23rd works for people, at what time would you like?
I'll, I'll just be blunt, the 23rd works for me, after that, it's very questionable.
Okay.
23rd works for me.
Yeah, 23rd works.
What time would you like for, uh, start, you would like to start the usual time at six, or you wanna do a little earlier?
Not early enough where I have to go back to work.
Let's go five.
Five?
Five.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
All support.
Moved by Councilor Burke, supported by Councilor Beyondich to hold, uh, a special meeting for the setting of the preliminary levy on Monday, September 23rd at 5:00.
Okay, I, I do have a comment here, we don't even have a preliminary budget. So, um, I'm hoping that we will have a preliminary budget before this meeting on the 23rd.
Yeah, we'll need to meet at time of year. I'll set that up.
Sorry, I type very slowly.
Can I add, I'd like, I'd like us to get it in time so we can look at it, not that day or not the night before, I, gonna be honest, I like, I, and I do look at the budget with my little calculator and, uh, I'd like at least a couple of days in advance.
I, I agree with you there, I mean, Thursdays are good, um, otherwise sometimes it runs into the weekend, if you're gonna be gone for the weekend or something like that, it just like goofs everything up.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor for the special meeting on the 23rd, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is carried and the budget committee gets the unenviable task of, of slaving away at the, what we need to, to review. 9, item 9J, the Personnel Committee, along with officers from the Fire and Ambulance Department, Officer, seems to me you were the only one there, right, Dan? Uh, interviewed Carl Reichel for a firefighter position, he is a firefighter already, so we are recommending this to the council for approval.
So move.
Support. Moved by Councilor Burke, supported by Councilor Beyondich. And I believe he said he might consider the MS down the road, but for now it was just going to be firefighter, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yep.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried.
Another good recruiting by Danny before the guy even bought his house in town.
Didn't wanna have them get thrown wrong and get away.
Are you kinda tapped into the multiple listing service or?
(laughing).
Uh, item 9K, approval of charitable gambling permit, caring for the kids' community, uh, Jeff noted that, uh, this was a technical issue that the state, uh, pointed out about making sure that the address is listed, so, your wishes please?
So move.
Support.
Moved by Councilor Burke and supported by Councilor Waller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Uh, that's my list of new business, uh, the next section is the open public forum, uh, as we say all the time, uh, we invite your input, these are not things that we, we will be able to act on this evening, but, uh, they can affect future council meetings and council topics. Anybody wish to address us? John?
Lord answered my question, so I won't ask you again.
I did, uh, request that there be a couple spaces between each of you.
(laughing).
I just thought that would be better for the, the tenor of the meeting. Yes, Karen?
Does anybody else have? Alright, so, um, the, with my hat on for the Boavick Area Civic Association, uh, Mayor Whitefield spoke about Oktoberfest coming up September 28, 27, 28. The evening of the 27th is designed to thank our sponsors and, um, this year's Oktoberfest best meisters will be, uh, Steve and Kayden Beyondich. They will be, uh, sort of hosting the ball as, as Mayor and Chris did last year. Uh, this year for a change, uh, we are having the ball here in town at the pavilion and that has already received a lot of positive responses, so that is great. Um, Baca has a meeting next week, and, and Oktoberfest will mostly look the same the next day, um, this year bringing back the shuttle, uh, between the rich in town, courtesy of Janice Rich, they are paying for that transportation. Um, do you want to? We need volunteers. We need it, so that's actually why I would throw it up mostly is because, um, we need people, this, this event, I think, I think you would agree Tracy, I would say this event and 4th of July are the, the events that Baca hosts that require the most volunteers. So, um, volunteer locals, post it on social media, you can call me, text me, email me, I'll give it to you if you don't have it. Would love for the council to be there, if you are able to take a shift or two volunteering, it would be really, really helpful, we can do sitting shifts, standing shifts, shifts that play to your strengths, all the, all the things. Um, so we'd really appreciate that. Next week is our monthly meeting and, uh, a proposal that is going to be coming, uh, on the agenda is to have a meet the local government candidate meeting. Um, if that passes next week, uh, we hope to maybe have it here in this room, if it doesn't pass, we will just do it as private, since we're still moving forward, um, and the candidates who are, uh, who are council candidates will be in attendance, I've only not heard from one person, so I thank everybody in the room for saying yes. It's going to be no panels, no yelling, no, no sitting on the hot seat and answering questions, it's a meet and greet, we'll have beverages, we'll have some food, uh, it's really for citizens to come and meet people who they don't know and to get their ideas across and also to see where people stand, council candidates, where they stand on issues that are important to them, so. Um, actually Tracy's idea and I absolutely love it, so, um, that's happening on October 1st and Jeff, oh, after the meeting, I'll see if the room is available, if it's not, it's fine, we can find another, another place if it isn't. Um, and then, uh, you can all, I'll put my strategic planning hat on, you can expect an email, again, with another, uh, collection of dates to see what works for a full meeting because we, we desperately need some sort of cheerleading to get us over the hump, we are almost at the end of our strategic plan, we can think of it longitudinally, so, um, that's going to be coming. And then lastly, I'm gonna sound really crabby about this, um, however, I, I can't understand why we can't get the cracks and the weeds and the crap out of, we, we have these events and the Public Works Department does a great job right before our events and, and the park usually looks good, the sidewalks might look good, but not in the regular day for the average Joe who's coming to the grocery store who wants to go get their groceries without seeing six inch high weeds, we're giving light notices to people for their whopping 12 inches and we can't even take care of our own stuff, right? And I say we, knowing I'm not even a voting member of the city, but I have the most love and a lot of tax money going into this city as, in residences and in business properties and I just don't understand the lack of pride in, I, I take my grandkids to the park and I'm pulling weeds out of the cracks, it makes me crazy. All, I, I've been supervising people my entire career, since I was 21 years old and I was terrible at it in the beginning, believe me. But I have to say, after hearing from our public works foreman today, I, that wasn't even on my list, but I'm just livid with, with, I'm livid with what he has said about his people. I know one person in particular that all of us call when they want something done and I think it is absolutely ridiculous for him to say, he's babysitting his staff, first of all, second of all, any, anybody can walk in there on a given day and I'll tell you he's not doing any babysitting except watching YouTube videos in his office and having cigarettes, that is a fact. And somebody can go, walk in there at any time of the day, peek in there if you want, go in there quietly, it's ridiculous. I don't have, I, I don't know Lauren, I've never met him, I don't care, that is ridiculous. And this town deserves more, look how hard you all are working every day, every day, not just the day you're sitting behind here having a meeting. All of us are working hard volunteering. There is absolutely no reason that we can't have a public works foreman and the entire department be on the same page with an annual calendar, an operational calendar, this gets done weekly, daily, monthly, seasonally, that's not hard. So, there you go, crabby, but I, I, I just can't sit here anymore and listen and, and see our town deteriorate with, and it's not because we don't have the great people in place, because we do. It, it's clear we have enough people in place that care of us. Thanks, appreciate it.
Mayor, I want to, to steal from you there, the weeds are growing deep, you see that every day.
I've been polling them.
And we got, today, we were having coffee today, only here in front between this little area right there, Janice snorted, was there picking weeds on her there, I'd bring it to the garbage. I seen that this morning, she was there at least 15, 20 minutes, a bag of gourches in her hand, mended over like that. I don't know if she's doing the job or what she's doing, but that's, you know, there's a lot of streets that, the weeds are, it's time, it's time that we start cleaning this dog up, otherwise it's gonna be like a ghost problem.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for the council this evening? I've got 7:35, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Of Councilor Waller, supported by Councilor Kenee, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Can I have a break, Karen? Oh, I'll probably be in a minute.